And not. Who?
Necessarily.
We have a forum.
But try and scrape it out. Or something.
Okay.
Hey, Ellen.
Ellen.
Good to see you.
It is nippy out there.
How's your bag?
Much improved.
Good. Testing.
The holidays.
Oh.
Just standing on the bridge to check on his house from here because.
Were you?
Yeah, the nice thing.
I'm great.
Oh, good.
Oh, it's your Thanksgiving.
We got good attendance now for that.
Thanksgiving, which.
We got good attendees for the Blueberry Ranch.
Great.
Yeah.
You're in Colorado.
Thank you. Is my advice, you're ready?
Ready.
Ready.
Do you want to hold this?
Maybe I'll have to.
No, I agree. So if you wanted to hold it to warm your hands.
It's Ian Simon.
Yeah, whatever. I mean, procedures before what?
Besties.
Right, right.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Is everybody ready? Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Natalie, we're ready. We're ready to go live. Okay. Tell me when. Okay. Sure. I'd like to call the special meeting of the Bexley Tree and Public Gardens Commission to order and call the role Mary McMunn.
Here.
Susan Quinton's chair here, Sheila Straub.
Here.
Dave Wakeman. Celeste Williams. Jim Wilson, vice chair.
Here.
Here, we have a quorum. Ellen Bowden, ex officio.
Here.
Elena Andrews, staff consultant.
Here.
Spencer Martin for Grant Archer. Parks, Parks Arborist. Okay, thank you. Lori Ann Feibel. Ben Kessler. Monette Friedlander, staff consultant.
Yeah.
So. Ellen, Elena, didn't I call you? I, I thought I started with you because the As were first. Okay. All right. We are going to verify that we have a quorum. We have five commission members out of seven commission members. Present. And I'd like a motion to dispense with the minutes of October and November monthly meetings.
I'd like to submit that we suspend suspense with the prior meetings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, motion is made and seconded that we dispense with the minutes of October and November. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I would have the minutes note that Mayor Kessler is now with us. So, under old business, we are continuing our discussion of twenty-two hundred East Main Street. It'll be the only item on the agenda today. We will not talk about any pending topics or other applications that might come or have come before the tree commission. And with that, I will turn it over to my vice chair, Jim Wilson.
Thank you. So our procedure today will be if the applicant has ma- made any changes to the plan since we met previously, we'll hear those changes. The applicant can have up to ten minutes, although if you've been with before us before, we love incision. We then will allow members of the public, the first those who want to testify in opposition. We would urge you to focus in on the changes being presented today rather than repeating what you've said before, but each of you will have up to three minutes and I would ask that you sign in on the, the sign in sheet before you speak. If there are any supporters of the plan, we'll give to them three minutes and also if there are any supporters would ask them to sign in. We will then hear again from the applicant to respond to any comments made. Then we will move to any questions and hopefully commission members will confine their questions to the changes being made and then we can move to where we were last time, which is beginning our discussion. Just a reminder to everyone, as you all know, our meetings are videotaped and available on the bexley.org website within a few days and that website's accessible by anyone. As commission members, we do not comment or discuss findings of other commissions, nor do we comment on subjects under review from other city commissions. As a commission, we will not be party to negative or disparaging comments about city staff, elected officials, appointed officials, or city consultants, or other commission members. Comments presented today should be germane to the subject at hand, so please stay on topic. And if in our chair's view, there's any presentation that's trending towards inflammatory or confrontational, we'll recess for ten minutes, regain our composure, and reconvene. So. Does the applicant want to give us an overview or present anything further on, on the plan?
Sure. Ryan Pierce with the Edge Group, three thirty West Spring Street. And Elena, do you have the, the file that you can? Pull up maybe a site plan?
Yep.
Second sheet, I think.
Yeah. See, Ryan, if you could get the mic just a little, just a little closer, that'd be great. Thank you. And, yeah. Well, maybe it's mayor. Let's get the information up first.
So. A, a few of the changes, and I'll just flip through this really quick. Along the western property line. The Zelkova's. We did, we, we reduced the spacing from forty-five feet down to thirty-foot spacing on center. Added three trees in doing that. Another change that we made is over here on the east side. We eliminated the, that small lawn strip along the back of walk. And we took the smaller seven sun tree and replaced that with. Oh.
It's at least.
Acolyte delms. We replaced those with the acolade elm. So a little broader canopy to help with the canopy coverage. We did add a plant enlargement deeper into the set that shows three bollards to control vehicular traffic along the, the Brighton pedestrian way. In the southwest corner, we actually added some brick pavers or pavers of some sort, not concrete. That would lead out to the back of walk at the Hudson twenty-nine. I just wanted to point out because it was brought to our attention that we did have pavers in the central piece of the plaza, and I think there's an opportunity probably in that pocket park as the design develops to get more pavers in a more public setting. Let's see here. We added a few notes on the, the plant schedule and we, we broke the plant schedule out into two schedules. So we have the plant list for what's on this site as well as what is on the separate site or the, the Bexley Square parcel. With that, we also added a little note on the winter creeper to verify prior to planting what that species really should be. Waiting on the city maybe to give us a little direction on what, what that standard should be down the streetscape. Can we flip? I think it's probably about eight slides back. There's a shade study. We added a sheet to the shade study. So we had, we had this sheet to start with, which shows ten, twelve, ten o'clock AM, twelve, two PM, four PM. And then four times during the year. And then we added the second sheet to try to help clarify what that really means. And we use the, because most of the discussion has focused on that western property line and that service drive that we're adding. We added the ten and the twelve. And what it's trying to show is, is how you would read where the shadow falls on the, the ground plane itself as compared to where it might fall on the building itself. So we are using the Alexander as an example. I know there were several Alexander residents that were interested in this. So that ten o'clock in the morning. Obviously during the winter solstice, there's going to be shadow a little bit longer throughout the day. By noon, the first balcony would be covered in, in a shadow. And then by the time you get to, to April, ten o'clock, it's about the same as what it would be in December. Two hours later, right? So that's how you would read that. And then we have the site plan right next to it to help reinforce what we were, what, how you read the shadow studies because that is at the ground plane. Not including any trees that we would plant along that property line. On the tree replacement, the tree replacement calculations did change. Obviously, we added three trees along the western property line. We also added the larger canopy instead of the seven sun. And then we went back through and adjusted all of the mature sizes to make them seventy-five percent of what a, a fact sheet might say the mature spread would be on a tree. So with the replacement, it, it came back. And this is just the trees that are on our site. And we did a little results table over here that shows just to replace the canopy that is there today. And I'm, I just wanted to point out, we're not getting any credit for any of the trees that along in the right of way. We're not including those. We're not including the blue trees in the Bexley Square parking lot. Just to replace those, we would need seven additional trees. And to get to the forty percent canopy coverage for our site, we would need nine. And then if, if you went back to the, the sheet that has the plant schedule on it, we added a tree replacement. Some language in there about if, if we cannot replace, say, the seven or nine trees, I think that's up for discussion. In the Bexley Square parking lot, then we could pay fee in lieu of at seven hundred fifty dollars a tree based on a fifty-foot diameter spread shade tree elsewhere in the city, but it would go into a funds that, that you all could use, I guess, to designate where that would go.
Ryan, where is that note located again?
If you go to the back a few sheets for the plant schedule and the, the maintenance. Maybe two more. Three more. Right here. So. On this piece right here, we added this replacement language in. That spells that out. We also split it out so that there are, the first piece of that was for the two trees where the curb cut is located. The second part of it was for the seven or nine trees for the replacement on the canopy. So it's, we tried to separate that out. So it could be seven or I guess it could be nine trees or it could be eleven that we're talking about. The limestone versus the granite curbing on the frontage, I think I mentioned last time, we're okay with that. It's just the code calls out granite. So that's why we had that on there. We missed picking that change up. And I think, I think that's it. There was some maintenance language that was brought to our attention. And I just wanted to point out that in the Main Street Design Guidelines, it does say in there that we need to keep. Oh, let me just read it so I'm not misquoted here. "All such landscape plantings and features shall be properly maintained, weeded, and watered, and any loss of plant material shall be replaced in keeping with the approved landscape plan." So I, I do think there's some language that covers the city to, for code enforcement to come out and make the owner replace it per the approved plan. So we did not add any language to that. And with that, I think that's all the changes we've really made.
Thank you. Do we have any residents that want to speak?
Hi. I'm Kathy Spornick. And I happen to live in that lower unit that Ryan, Ryan said would get no sun. Can I ask why the building all of a sudden is going to be thirty feet away from us instead of forty-five feet? Like it was all along?
You, you can offer your comments. Commission members can choose to ask the applicants any questions that are raised.
Well, to me, who I have supported this project from the beginning, but not quite as close to my condo as it is and not to cut out all the light, all my sunshine that it's going to. And now it appears it's going to be even worse. And also all the vegetation that he's planting on the west side, it will not see any daylight either, nor will it grow. And it will die. And I'll wither up to from no sunshine.
Are there any other residents that want to make comments?
I agree with, I'm Nancy Marzella. I live in unit four zero seven in the Alexander. And my unit is also one who will be dealing with darkness a lot of the year. And I do enjoy my plants. I plant a lot of plants on my porch, but I think that'll be for nevermore. When I look at this drawing, I feel that that west side of the building is being treated almost like an alley. You know, there's not as many beautification details like the, like the east side of the building and other sides of the building. It's more or less we're an alley. And I agree with Kathy and everybody. We know that those plants aren't going to grow because it will be dark. And I just wonder if there's something that can be done about that. And I, I, I think everybody's kind of taking the shade study lightly. We do not take that lightly. We do not want to be living in darkness. It's not healthy, for one thing, to have shade on our building half of the year. The other thing is we have all these lovely drawings that you've all done showing these big lovely trees that I know I'm not going to live long enough to ever see those big lovely trees. I, I think we need to see drawings that show the actual size of the plant you plan to plant there. And I know there are going to be those little twiggy things. And that building is not going to look as beautiful on drawings, I guess, with the little twiggy things. So I would like to see actual, actual drawings. So that is all I have to say. Because that's the only things we're allowed to talk about.
Thank you. Any other residents? If not, is there anyone that wants to speak in favor of the project? Does the applicant want to respond to anything that's been said?
Mayor, if you can pull the, the shadow study back up. So I'm sorry if I misquoted, but the thirty-foot spacing, the spacing between the building location has not changed. The spacing was really the spacing of the trees from forty-five feet on center for each tree along that property land to thirty feet. It's not the building to the property line. And then with the shadow study, I hope I never said that that building will be in shadow all the time because what we're, what we're trying to show is that on August twenty-one at ten o'clock in the morning, the sun is already highlighting the top four or three floors of the Alexander. By noon, the entire building is in full sun. June twenty-one, the entire building is in full sun. August twenty-one, the entire building is in full sun at noon. That is what we are trying to depict with the shadow study. And keep in mind, the shadow study is, it's on a computer program. It's as accurate as we can get it. We have a model of the proposed building. We have, we have modeled this building based on Asbeld drawings. We know where the site elevations are. The computer does all of the calculations on the solstice and sun angles and time of year. We could do it for any day of the year. Is it exact? I can't swear that it's exact. I didn't design the program. And I think the, the other piece is that this is showing a shadow line, but there's also ambient light that I don't think the shadow line will be that crisp on most days in central Ohio. It, it'll be a blended shadow line, but this is showing where the direct sun rays would, would stop. The other thing I think to point out is along that west property line, that is the shadow line at the ground plane. So any trees or plant material in that plant bed will be getting sun from that time forward, right? And then it'll start getting shadows from the gateway or the Alexander, but like any urban condition. I think that's it. Thank you.
No, sorry. We, now, Ellen, I sort of passed by you at the beginning, but do you have any additional comments? I'm sure Monette's glad that she's not in charge of reading your comments this meeting.
I know. I, I almost just didn't show up for Monette, just so she could have fun. Um, no, I mean, I think that Ryan covered most of the items in terms of calling out that the, the lawn area was removed and larger trees were proposed. I think that the tree commission, it makes sense to talk about the tree replacement and the funding of those trees and whether or not the trees off-site, meaning trees in the right-of-way or trees in the parking lot adjacent to City Hall should be counted towards their total or not. The granite curbs, thank you for clarifying that, Ryan, in terms of the, the note on that. So we can, I think we just, as a city, just need to verify what are we using and then just let them know on that. With the winter creeper, the note of verify actual species prior to planting, there have been a number of tree commission members and alternate members who have sent options to consider for, you know, in lieu of winter creeper. And I think that that's something that the tree commission and the city can definitely undertake. And I think for the purpose of not having to hold things up and make that decision, having that note that says verify species prior to planting should make sense. And we should, you know, make sure that that list is actually modified before it goes out to bid to the landscape contractors. And so they don't buy one hundred and fifty-eight winter creeper and then have to send it back. Let's see, other items. I think that with the Zelkova's along the new access road there, I think that given the, the light study that is showing there and the plant material that is selected. I think that given the, the light study that is showing there and the plant material that is selected, it is both a part sun, full sun plant material, all of that within that. And I think that given the shade studies, that there will be enough sun in terms of for both the trees and the shrubs. Some of those, the plants that are there in terms of the Grolo Sumac and the ITA all do have a certain amount of shade tolerance. And that area is going to be irrigated. And so I think that they're doing all that they can for the health and the benefit of those plants. I appreciate that they added a little bit more trees in there, increasing that from eight to 11, just because I think it'll have a nicer LA effect as you go down there. One new item, a couple of new items that were not in my staff report from before and things that have come up. I think that we should discuss the north property line fence. If you scroll up a little bit just on this plan, Ben, currently, right now, the property line is where that little arrow is. And so they're talking about having a, a row of evergreen fencing. The property line, a row of evergreen, excuse me, plant material, and then a row of fences. And the fence is immediately adjacent to the parking lot. So it is screened by, for the four neighbors on the north, but not necessarily the parking lot. By code, there needs to be an eight-foot fence between commercial and residential properties and continental and edge in terms of working through this process. It decided to pull their fence back from the property line to be able to provide a, a bed for the residents there to, to screen for the residents. It is common in some of the areas within the city to have that fence, and it's not screened on the commercial side. And so that was the decision that was made. And so I think that that's something that the tree commission should discuss as to whether or not they think that that makes sense. Or do they flip it in terms of the fences at the property line, thereby having the screening for the parking lot? The alley off of Bryden, Ryan noted that they are adding three additional bollards there that will prevent any kind of vehicular traffic that's going in. And currently, right now, in terms of talking with them, the discussion is that that road would be repaved, just in asphalt, as a 10-foot asphalt path that could be used by both pedestrian and vehicular traffic. And there has been, I know some discussion about, are there other materials that could potentially be better off use there in terms of either pavers or permeable pavers, that I think is something that the tree commission could discuss. The use of brick, I believe that Ryan covered that in terms of adding brick by the Hudson 29 entrance. It does exist in that Central Plaza. I think that, Ben, if you could scroll down to the Main Street part. Whoops. I think that the area that is going to be basically where, so you can see the brick there that you see in the gray, that would be the pavers. That area that is kind of in between now City Hall, what the old plaza is, right, where Ben's cursor is. That, I think, needs to be relooked at and has a great opportunity for further brick. And I think that that's something that needs to, that the whole area needs to be studied right now in terms of coming in. I know that that's not part of our review today, but I think that coordination efforts are going to need to happen with, within that. EV chargers that had come up, so the electric car chargers, the one that are out here currently right now, they are not planned to be relocated in any way. And if new ones are to happen, they were talking about having them within the actual parking garage itself and not necessarily out. They are difficult to screen. They tend to be pretty big. And so that's something that, to get the tree commissions kind of thought on that. And then bike racks. You can see along Main Street. If you are looking at the Central Plaza and you go two tree wells to the east and then two to the west, you can see that they have bike racks that are located within the right-of-way on those areas. And whether or not that's an appropriate use of their location that the tree commission should discuss. And then there are also by the eastern entrance off of the parking lot. They, they have another set up in through there. Yep, exactly, up in that area. And those were the only other kind of changes from the staff comments from the previous one.
Thank you, Eleanor. Just a reminder where we left off, because I didn't mention this before. We've already approved the access road cutting through the right-of-way with conditions. So we're not, we've already done that work. I think we now could ask questions of Eleanor or Spencer or the applicant that you have, and I, again, would are just to sort of focus in on the changes that have been made. And then we can proceed to discuss. Is there any questions for Eleanor or the applicant or Spencer?
I have a question for the applicant, please. Going back to the solar study. If you could go to the, the sun path, please. Where you have the, the month of year, yes. So I'm really wondering, this doesn't seem to be an elevation. Doesn't seem to represent to me 23.5, something around there degree of sun. And I'm wondering if this, here we are at 10 AM and that's at noon. At what, what would two o'clock look like? Would that be all blocked out for the most part?
Can you please go back one slide?
The first floor.
So that was in December. You were looking at 10 and noon. You can see where the edge of the shadow is here at noon, which was hitting the Alexander's first floor. By, by 2 PM, the shadow of the gateway and the shadow of the Alexander, basically, the, the sun is almost due south. Right? So this is all in sun right here. And our shadow is up on the north. Yep. And then by four o'clock, then the gateway starts to shadow. Now, keep in mind, that's in December when trees and most deciduous plants are all dormant. They're really not getting a whole lot of use out of the sun at that point. So as far as vegetation goes, December is more about, I think, probably for building ARB so that people understand how much shade is actually going to be on certain parts of the site.
Seems like they're shaded more than we anticipate. And I'm not sure how.
What, what's shaded more than we anticipate?
Aren't you thinking about going up another floor?
No, that's shown on this, this site plane. You can see the sixth story right here. It's just this little piece of the building.
Okay.
It's a partial. So that, that's included in this shadow study.
I'm just not sure if the trees will survive under that minimal. I know that's a minimal amount of sunlight for that time.
Yeah, I would just recommend, you know, driving down any urban street with seven-story buildings and understanding there are shade trees or street trees in, in every city, right, with urban buildings. I mean, it, this is not going to cast a dark, like nighttime shadow on anything. It's going to be ambient light.
Sunlight. I do understand that. It just, it seems that it's really changing the ability to be able to grow healthy trees.
In December?
To keep them healthy through the fall, you know, when the leaves are off and they, they still, I know the trees need to go into a dormancy, but that.
Right. They're not providing a lot of energy and growth during that, those months, right?
Yep. I still question that, though.
Okay.
So just also as a follow-up, I mean, when, so trees stop photosynthesizing when the, when the leaves are off. And so when the trees are in dormancy, they're, they're really not doing anything, which is one of the reasons why people say you can plant in the fall and then through the winter, because it's not as such a big shock to the trees, because they're basically sleeping. And so really looking at the months of April and August from, you know, noon to four or even six in terms of full sun is considered six or more hours a day of sunlight. Part sun is anywhere from like three to six, and then full shade is, you know, full shade, obviously. So when you're looking at those and understanding that the trees are definitely going to have anywhere from four to six hours of sunlight or the plants, that they're going to be, they, based on the sun studies that are shown here, they should be good.
And do you think, since around the trees, the trees that are being planted, since they'll have a back, they won't have a back to them anymore because they're close to the, to the building, that they're, they're a good choice themselves?
For the trees? Yes. I mean, I think that all of the trees that have been selected are trees that are selected to be urban tolerant. And urban tolerance is also considered not only salt tolerance, but also in terms of concrete, in terms of its surrounding, in terms of concrete. But then it's also concerned in terms of heat, in terms of the heat island effect, not only from the concrete and the asphalt, but also from adjacent buildings and the heat that might reflect off of the, the buildings. And so if anything, you know, having, you know, kind of an alleyway here, it's going to, you know, create a warmer environment, which is probably going to be healthy, healthier for the trees. It's going to be a little bit more protected from winds that can sometimes damage early new trees. But most of the plant material and the trees that they have selected are all urban tolerant and would consider and would do well in those areas.
Plus, is that your, all your questions?
Yes, for now.
Sheila, do you have any questions?
I feel the guidance of Eleanor is very important, and I, the comments that you've made, I think should put us all at peace about the process of shade and the trees being able to tolerate. So, thank you.
Right. And, I mean, and just, you know, to also play, you know, devil's advocate, the Alexander is going to be shading the plant material as well along there. So, I mean, both buildings are going to be creating an environment that I think Edge is trying to negotiate in terms of, you know, what's going to work, work well, because as you can see, as you get towards four o'clock now, the Alexander is starting to shade, you know, the building, you know, to the, to the east of it. And so basically, you know, just really trying to design that as a, an urban street, basically.
So it will get less sun than even when it's not shaded by the, by the new building, it will get its own shade because of Alexander then. Yeah.
So we'll, we'll have time for discussion and trying to keep us orderly. Any questions, Mayor?
Well, I appreciate your information, Eleanor. I would be curious, though, just to hear your thoughts about it, Spencer, you know, with your experience.
Um, I think that the Zelkova's will be all right. He brings up a good point. You know, if you were to drive down in downtown Columbus, you know, those buildings are 40 stories, 20 stories easily. And those trees, they do well. They exhibit phototropism, so they grow towards the light. If anything, probably these trees will grow vertically quicker. But yeah, I mean, they're as good a choice as any for the conditions.
Kind of like an understory in the forest.
Yeah, you know.
It's a good way to look at it.
Yep.
Mr. Vice Chair, I'm unsure if we're just talking about Zelkova's or, or more.
It's open to any questions anyone has before we move on to discussion as members of the commission.
Okay. So I guess I'll just reserve, I don't have any questions about the Zelkova's.
Or about anything else?
No, because I, I do think we have opportunity during our discussion to talk about the, the alleys and the bricks, so.
I, I think that's all the questions. So now we move to discussion. Anyone want to start?
Um, yes, I, I'd be happy to start to lay out some of the topics I have for discussion, and then maybe we could add to them. And one is the, the bricks that, Mayor, could you go back to that one where it showed Edge installing some bricks on the? I, I'm not sure that's, Ryan, is that the new one? Didn't you show some, if we go to the west side, did you show a brick threshold on the access?
The gray area by the number 769 that goes from the building directly south.
Okay, okay. I guess I, I miss saw whatever it was before. I was, I'm thoughtful that a brick threshold between the two buildings would be helpful and not in a transition to notify drivers that they are moving from one condition to another, as well as sort of, I guess, make the building look a little bit more situated in the site. And we also talked about maybe some permeable surfaces along that connector path. I don't know what you call that. From the north parking lot to Bryden, is there a name for that? Is it just connector? Not connector. Knowing, knowing that there is going to be a difference in coverage of the lot with the building and the, the asphalt, it would seem to me that changing out the asphalt into permeable surface would be helpful for the environment and probably be helpful in meeting whatever conditions perhaps that you're going to need to mitigate for stormwater runoff. I do think that we need to have as a topic item, the discussion of moving the fence back to the property line from being five feet north. It would offer benefits to landscaping inside that and as well as coverage of the fence from the parking lot. I'd like to have a full commission discussion on that. Since we're, yeah, since it's just a discussion, I'm going to say I think Zelkova's a good choice. I think, you know, to Spencer's point, it's worked well. In Bexley, we have Zelkova and Livingston planted five or seven in front of the Peking Dynasty. Multiple, yeah, multiple locations, and they have done well in extremely tough, you know, urban conditions without any, any type of irrigation. And I'm, I'm grateful for bringing more brick into the plan because it's one of the unique aspects of Bexley. We talked about that at our first meeting, I think in September, brick, wrought iron and pillars. And so just having a brick installation helps bring this kind of in line with the history of Bexley. So those would be my topics, Mr. Vice Chair.
Do you expect me to remember all those?
Well, I have it written down here. I'll pass it over.
Other comments? So I have some, some comments, you know. I think I'd start by saying that, you know, the applicant obviously has the right under the, the Main Street Guidelines to do whatever those guidelines allow it to do. I do think that the loss of those Sycamores, or I'm sorry, London Plains is sort of the elephant in the room and the elephant in the community. And I think it's difficult to see that they would survive this construction in any event. But everything we have to consider, to me, is considered in light of the loss of those trees and the landscape plan is, for me, is considered in light of the loss of those trees as well as the other trees. And I think this sort of moves the Main Street Guidelines from being conceptual to real. And as we develop the rest of Main Street, I'd simply raise the question of what does our future hold if every other applicant can remove London Plains so that a major feature of the character of Main Street now is lost. And I think we don't have the say-so over that, but it does impact my assessment of the plan. Apropos of some of the things Susan said, you know, I trust our staff and the Zelkova's have succeeded elsewhere. It's also a serious issue for the neighbors, and it's the one that we've heard a lot about in their comments. And I do think that anything we approve should have some sort of interim review to see whether those trees are living up to their promise. Because the folks that live next door are going to be the most directly affected by those. In terms of, of the alley up to Bryden, in addition to what Susan said, you know, this is a substance, or this is a structure that's largely impermeable. All the water that hits this is going to go into our sewer system. And it seems to me that some sort of permeable surface in the alley would at least in a small way assuage the loss of permeability that, that this project entails. So, you know, I, I think that that's an important aspect of this, you know. I will say that I think that, that the landscape architect and Edge have done a good job of trying to bring as good a plan as possible, given the footprint and the size of this structure. And when we get to it, I'll, I'll make a motion that addresses that, but if I'm recognized. But I think, I think, you know, that this should be, you know, I, I realize that the ordinances do have a provision in there that candidly, the applicant's not responsible for the fact that we found it largely insufficient to ensure that property owners maintain their property. And so I'd probably put some conditions on any changes coming back to this commission, given how important a project this is. You know, I agree with that. I think this is an opportune time to talk about the, the ground cover in the, in the tree planter boxes. And I think that has to be a larger conversation, but my guess is that we're not. we're not planning that until twenty twenty-five probably realistically. So, um, um, we've got time to have that discussion and I doubt that that's the applicant's major concern here. Um, you know, whe- you know, whether bike racks and hardscape are within our jurisdiction, we've certainly talked about them a lot over the years. And, you know, again, we talked about this last meeting. We're, as opposed to many plans where we, we have the final say, we're just making recommendations to BZAP here. And so I don't think it hurts for us to offer our views as to where charging stations or bike racks or, or hardscape goes. And so I do think that's all appropriately within the scope of our discussion. So. Is there further discussion?
Can I add for one thing? And, and just because I haven't, I'm Jason Hockstock, the County Real State.
Have to give the, like, a chance to.
No, that's fair. I'm fine, I'm a, a for that. Um, but I want to point something out here that there's a technical issue with converting that connector path to Bryden, uh, into permeable pavement. And if you look, there's a red line as SA as it goes up through there. It comes back up through that connection piece. Um, that is a fifteen inch sanitary sub trunk that serves the greater area of the community. City Columbus controls those facilities and generally what they try to do is avoid infiltration into their trenches. So by putting permeable pavement over that of any sort, pavers, whatever, effectively what you're encouraging is water to get into their system. And that's not something that e- even if you suggested or required us to do that, we couldn't get that approved through the city of Columbus. So I, I understand where we are conceptually and what we're trying to pursue, but there is a technical restriction that we have. And, and we, we would not be able to commit to that at all as part of the project. And, and just for background, I'm a professional engineer. I've been civil engineer for almost thirty years. So y- you know, prior to working for Frank, I was in consulting and did this stuff all the time. So, uh, just want to point that out. Cause I, I get the feeling we're going to head towards that discussion. I didn't want you to go down a path that we couldn't perform for you if you asked. So.
Does anyone, um, from the community want to respond? Thank you.
So I, we could respond with the questions though then, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. So it would be interesting to me if that was not available, what would be available?
So, so what we, we are proposing as part of the project is it, within the garage system itself, an underground storage system. So, uh, what it does is it, it filters out the fine sediments and debris, uh, prior to that stormwater getting into the system. So within the garage itself, there'll be these chambers that hold water, detain it. There'll be a, uh, water quality unit associated with that, which basically takes out the debris, paper, uh, oils, that type of thing out of the water itself. So that's how we offset, uh, some of the stormwater concerns that you have. So that, that's how it's managed.
Is, is that feeding in then to the stormwater sewer system?
Well, the sto- the stormwater ultimately does go into the stormwater system, which obviously outlets to the, the creek there to the west, but.
Where it goes into the ground. That's, that's the distinction that the commission is concerned about is not all rainwater goes into the sewer system. Some of it goes into the ground. That's the value of trees.
But I guess I, I, I maybe was too vague with my comment. What I was hoping to sort of allude to was if there can't be pavers up there, could the area then therefore between say the Alexander and Rusty Bucket be, be pavers again?
So again, there's the challenges. We have to relocate that sanitary sewer around the west side of the building. So that will be routing down the west side of the building. So if you look at the drawing, the, the sanitary sub trunk actually sits underneath the building as it is occupied today. We're moving it west into the middle of that drive aisle. It's a pretty significant expanse. It's upwards of like three quarters or half or a million bucks. So, yeah. The, the red line on, on the west.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're, we're actually going to be moving that west into into the middle of the alley. So, you know, there, there are, you know, beyond, there's a lot of technical issues with, with a, a, a compact site like this. I mean, obviously, uh, we also have, you know, we've always avoided it, haven't really discussed it, but on the northeast corner, there's AT&T cabinets, those conduit duct banks, that fiber feeds everyone's internet up in the area. It's how everybody communicates. We've got to reroute that around the north side of the building and come down the west side as well. So it, it, the, the idea of doing, uh, pervious pavers, pervious pavement is very difficult on the site. With hence why we are doing chambers underneath the building.
I have a question.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Um, so given that a lot of this happens, our, our large rainwater occurs when we have, because the flooding occurs because of large rainwater, but large amount of rainwater. But what happens if we, uh, have electric, electricity go out? What is your capacity to keep that running when you had to keep a whole building running with twenty some apartments?
Two hun-
Two hundred. Oh, I say twenty, I, I dropped a digit, didn't I?
Yeah. So I'm going to be a little bit out of my lane here. We, we're dependent on AEP, just like you all are. So however, AP, AEP will feed the facilities. I recognize in Bexley, I've heard from Mr. Cass and Mr. Lux about the problems that has been here historically, but you know, those facilities are also AEPs to manage. So however, I, I would defer to them to be able to answer your question.
It seems to me that there should be more self-knowledge about this because you are impacting our environment to a great deal. We're losing a lot of our trees to absorb the water. We're not being able to drain the way that we normally have drained. And I just love to have more.
We're asking questions.
Okay. I just want to know what kind of.
Well, we're, we're a customer of AEP as well. I mean, we, we'd be dependent upon their facilities, uh, to be able to operate our property, you know, or, you know, we reach out to them, ask for what we call will serve letters. Do we add the capacity, not negatively impact other neighbors or whatever? And, you know, we're pursuing that now, but we do not anticipate any problems from that.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any?
If we could go on, Mayor Kessler, did you want to offer a comment?
I have some questions because, but I, in the spirit of, um, bringing out some more information, I think, if that's okay. Jason, specific to stormwater retention? Is that, that's then you're retain- retaining and then you're slow releasing back into the standard, into the storm. Is that not correct?
Correct. So the, uh, the way that's designed is, uh, i- it's actually detention. This is the different, slightly different retention. You see a pond or whatever detention.
George, yeah.
Um, but the, i- i- it takes a large rainfall event, dump a bucket of water on there and it holds it and, and just releases it at a much lesser rate. You don't have that today. So it should be improving it. I know part of the original meetings I had with the Alexander was to talk through some of their concerns about what they deal with today, what, you know, how or, or if we're improving in the situation or whatever, we, we should be reducing the runoff that goes through the Alexander property. Um, and, and because of that, we, we will lessen the amount of, I'll say, impact to the system that's even in Main Street, because that's where our stormwater outlets ultimately. Uh, so what, what you'll see is a reduction in runoff from the property under the current configuration, just because of standards have changed. It's improved. It's, you know, we, we will be lessening, lessening the impact to the community.
Yeah. And I wanted to point that out. It's really important to us. And so we've been adamant about that and as, as is the code, fortunately, uh, that just that it's not simply, it's not simply storing and releasing right away, but it's a slow release, which solves, helps to solve a lot of the flooding issues we've had as a community. Also, I'm, I'm, I want to make sure we're not cross, crossing the EV issue. This project has new EV charging units as part of the project. We are not planning on abandoning the city hall EV infrastructure.
Right. I think Eleanor mentioned that in her remarks.
I was, I was a little.
Yeah, we, we're adding electric vehicle charging stations within the garage itself. So, okay.
I'm going to clarify. Thank you.
Is that all your questions?
I have so many more, but.
Okay. Move on, okay. So maybe Mr. Vice Chair, we should go on to the question of the location of the, uh, fence on the property line or not on the property line.
Sure. Uh, I mean, the, one of my concerns is about the fences is I read the ordinances and this is spec- specifically, uh, section twelve sixty-four point oh five. It says the fence shall be on the property lot is, um, how I read it. Um, if, um, you know, we, I don't think we have the power to grant, grant a variance. So I think if there, it, you know, I understand the neighbors concerned and their desire for plantings on that side. And this seems a bit of an oddity that that's how the ordinance is written, but it does seem to say that the fence shall be on the property line. So I think at least in any recommendation we make, we need to clarify that, um, we're not recommending a variance. Um, my understanding from previous resident statements is that most of the uh, resident side of that fence already has significant plantings. So I guess in terms of my limited aesthetic sense, it raises for me the question of whether the plantings are better on the parking lot side, if the fence is already going to be well covered by plantings on the other side of the fence.
I think Eleanor's staff comments that Monet read last month indicated that of the four residential properties, three already had significant, um, evergreen barriers between that and the parking lot.
I, I don't know if it's all evergreen, but it's, it is a, a combination of that. Um, and then I wasn't sure in terms of Ryan and Jason, if you guys had talked to or made any kind of discussions with the homeowners there, or if it's something that you had already discussed with zoning in terms of the location of that fence.
I, I spoke with one directly. Um, and then I think the other home wasn't occupied at the time, so did not get to communicate with them. But, you know, we're, we're receptive to the idea if, if we need to, to go talk to those neighbors. If they prefer some of those plantings on their side of the fence, we can work with them and, and make that work. That's, that's not an issue from our perspective.
Uh, well, I'd be interested in other commission members' thoughts on that because it would seem, that's a, what, what is the linear footage of that? Is it hu- hu- hundred and fifty feet? I think you mentioned to us, Ryan, what it was, significant, or maybe that's a juniper.
The, along, um, along the east Main Street front edge, it's, I think it was three hundred and three feet. Basically from the property line to the other property line. So it's got to be close, close enough, right?
Okay.
If I, I would add that if, if the plantings are going to be on the parking lot side, some variation, I mean, I'm not suggesting height variation, but at, at least in terms of alternating species there would be nice instead of a solid, I guess it's arboridie.
It's juniper, I think.
Juniper, okay.
Yeah. From our perspective, we would be open to any of, you know, setting a rhythm of different plantings and the diversity through there. Um, we were doing that purely as a good gesture to the neighbors to soften up the, the, the wall fence of an eight foot fence or the wall effect of an eight foot fence along their property line. Is why the plants are on their side of the fence.
I, I, I think also just to remind commission members that when you build a fence like this, the more attractive aspect of the fence would be on the neighbor's side, correct?
The fence that we've, uh, specified so far is the exact same fence. That's a long giant eagle. And it's a two-sided fence, so it really.
Two-sided fence.
They're both finished sides, yeah.
Um, I, I just wanted to make sure I'm looking at the right thing because I walked over there to see what was currently there. And it's, it's a raw, or a, uh, chain link fence, right? That's on that border, that north border?
Currently, there is a chain link fence along the north property line. I don't know if it's on our property or actually on the single family.
And that's the one that we're saying is five feet to the north? Of the property line?
As the fence, um, five feet into the property with the plantings then on the outside of the fence.
So between the two fences.
Right.
Okay, because.
So, you know, I, I, for me, I think this could be solved by approving other aspects of the plan and bringing this relatively minor issue back to us, but maybe we need advice from the mayor or someone. But as I read the ordinance, and I wouldn't have written it this way, it says the fence should be on the property line. And I don't think we have the power to grant a variance from that. Now, BZAP would. Um, so maybe at the end of the day, it's not a problem, but.
Yeah, I would agree that BZAP would be the one to grant that variance. Um, but I think you can make a recommendation that, uh, if you, if you wish, you could make a recommendation that the fence be moved to the property line, um, to provide the buffer on the south side. And from a practical matter, the applicant could always discuss providing additional plantings on the resident's side if they would wish. Essentially.
Yeah. It just seems to me three hundred feet and five feet of depth is a lot of planting space. And that, uh, with the varied vegetation of juniper and arboridie, and I didn't know if you could stick in some shade trees, it would do a lot to, um, compensate for loss of greenery in other areas.
Well, I walked out there just, you know, before the meeting and it's pretty much winged juanumus, which is highly invasive. And all, I saw most of what's over there probably could easily.
There's a, I think there's a lot of honeysuckle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's.
Maybe not the juanumus, but, um, i- in talking to Jason, I mean, so here's a property line, there's a property line, there's one. So these are the four kind of lots. This lot on the west really doesn't have a lot of greenery along their fence line. The other three do. And yes, I think a lot of it, probably at least in this site here, or, or it's honeysuckle. Um, but I think, Jason, you'd be open to going and talking to any of these neighbors to see if they would like some plantings to help soften the wall effect if we move the fence to the property line. And then we would have the five feet on our side to move some plants. And, um, and I think you could do leather leaf, I burn them or something.
Well, I think.
Semi, semi evergreen, you know.
Huge, huge opportunity there.
Yeah.
And plus a kind of a good neighbor.
And we already have a few, uh, trees that are in that area and there are some existing trees. So I don't know that we would really be adding a lot of canopy into that area, but I think mixing up the shrubs or the hedge would be nice.
I think there are some larger trees though over there. I'm not sure what they are that would.
Off, off our site?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, uh, there's some Norway spruce, it looks like, right in this area. I'm not exactly sure what these two large ones are just off the site.
Okay.
Other areas for conversation?
I do like the idea of not having to go to BZAP and just having it on the property line as we have done in the past and provide, um, plantings for the people that are involved that own homes, one of which I have sold. So I know that that's part of the conversation that would make them very happy.
I, I would say that it's hardly fair to these junipers to plant them next to honeysuckle. They deserve a fence in this region.
I'm just curious, do we even know how much that alley is used?
I think it's a shortcut to Giant Eagle or.
For the local.
And over to City Hall.
Okay.
I never knew that before this project. Other, if we're, if we're done talking about the fence, or there are other areas folks want to discuss, are we ready for a motion to frame our discussion?
Well, generally at this time, we call on everybody individually, so we make sure. So let's start. Ms. McMon, do you have any more questions or any topics?
I, no. Susan, just really quickly, for the minutes, do we want to notice that Dave Wakeman showed up?
Yes, we do. We can say Dave Wakeman was here, although we did have a quorum and I should say that City Councilwoman, Laurie Ann Feivel was also here. So let's, but the minutes, please note, okay? So you have no more questions, Ms. Strobe?
I do not.
Ms. Williams?
I do, I do. And I would love to, for Eleanor, just chime in to see what we can do, uh, to improve some of the, um, the, uh, tran- the, the ability for the water to be able to transfer down into the ground a little bit more, rather than, um, all this, have all this concrete. And can, we were talking about brick before and you were saying that that was not going to be, we were able to do that. So I'm hoping you have some good solutions for that.
So I, I think given now the knowledge of the sewer line running there, the main areas where that would be beneficial, it, it sounds as if it's potentially taken off of the table. And so the fact that they do have beds around the perimeter of the building, I mean, I think that they have beds as big as they possibly can, given what the zoning allows for in terms of the size of the building. Um, I, I don't know if having, you know, permeable parking lots and, and pavers with that economically makes sense. you know, permeable parking lots and, and pavers with that economically makes sense. It's kind of a unproven kind of technology that it is used in terms of having like permeable concrete and permeable asphalt. Um, but I think that the fact that they are in a certain way taking the water and actually then detaining it and treating it is a fantastic thing to, to hear. I hadn't, I hadn't heard that yet. I mean, I think that it is, it is certainly not the same in terms of the area that is open and green right now, where water can be retained and goes back into the aquifer and, you know, helps all the different plants. But the issue is that is in conflict with development of, you know, a commercial development within this corridor. So it's, it's, it's kind of hard to, you, you can't necessarily have your cake and eat it too. You can't necessarily say we want to develop this lot and then provide, you know, apartments for the community that really needs it, but then we also want to have as much open green space as possible to retain, you know, the knowledge there. Um, that would then, I would say then that area would need to be zoned as like a park or something, but it's the zoned commercial. So I think that for um, you know, the aspect in terms of providing trees and providing plant material. I mean, unless Ryan has an, any other thoughts, I, I can't think of anything off the top of my head that would not, that would necessarily change that in terms of sort of saying, hey, could we put everything?
Right.
Permeable paver.
Yes, thank you. Um, I'm just get concerned because we're losing a lot of our, our uh, soil to absorb, and he wasn't speaking of any kind of redundancy program or equipment for this big uh, retentions that you were having put in, but.
I, I can add something too, just from our work with retain, with um, permeable pavement. Um, just recently, we were looking at permeable pavement as part of our Alley of the Future project. The geotech work that we've done in Bexley has indicated, not surprisingly, that the soil is incredibly clay filled. And so we, just like permeable pavements that might work in areas geotechnically that have more permeable soil, uh, those do function well, but in Bexley, all it does is come right back up because it's clay. Um, so we wanted to do permeable pavement because it feels really good, but it wasn't going to achieve the, you know, the, the, what we were hoping to achieve with it. And so we've had to change course, and, and that's not the first time we found that. Then I would imagine that the soil throughout Bexley is probably, as we know, digging in our own yards fairly consistent. Um, so I think another thing that might be asked of the applicant is are there other options, not to put you on the spot, but with that retention or detention of the water, can it be used as a gray water system to help come back to the landscaping at all? Might be a question that a commission member might ask, if that's of interest.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yes, right, Ryan, would you?
Can I quickly just?
Gray water.
So we have dealt with cisterns with gray water before, and you have to imagine that your detention is there to capture water when it's raining, slow release it over time so that you're helping offset the flooding effects of the rainwater. Um, however, when you need the water for the landscape, it's, it's all out of the cistern and ready for the next rainfall. So um, those cisterns and gray water systems are very difficult to, to really make them work right, I would say. Very difficult.
Thank you. So um, i- in order to um, help us, oh, Mr. Wakeman, I'm so sorry, I forgot to call on you.
I just have one question. Is this building going to be LEED certified or no? No.
Okay. I- is it possible to know what the life of the building would be? It's, I know it's not really a question for us, but I keep thinking of the life of the trees. Do you have any sense? You can just refuse to answer. Okay, then we'll move on. So um, Mr. Wilson, I know that you have worked on framing a motion so that we're not here till midnight, and I believe that you have copies to share with people and to read.
I do, um, not that it guarantees we won't be here till midnight, um.
Okay, that's. Okay. Is it? Otherwise you can share. Um, is it appropriate to give to people in the audience?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, share. Is there any extras, Laurie Ann, down there? Okay, maybe give it to, to Ryan and Jason. And any extra there to give to people in the audience? Ellen, is there anything to give to Nancy or Kathy? Any extras?
No, but you know what Dave and I can share.
Okay, that'd be great. Okay, yeah, Mr. Wilson, would you start, please, and frame the con- the context for this?
Profess this motion by saying that, that, you know, this was obviously drafted based on our previous conversation, and we've heard some, some new things I did here, tried to incorporate what we saw in the changes of the plan, but um, there, there will be no um, no offense taken if folks want to remove or revise any part of this motion, but given this is more complicated than, than our normal landscape review, I thought it'd be helpful to have a framework to work from. So um, I'll read the whole thing. Um, based on the plans and testimony presented, the Tree Committee and Public Garden Commission makes the following findings and recommendations to the Board of Zoning Appeals under Bexley Ordinance twelve twenty point oh six D. Recommend that the approval of any plan be conditioned on the approval of a plan presented by the owner of the City Hall slash Bexley Square Parking Lot or pursuant to its express authority that incorporates the elements of the applicant's uh, plan that are located on the City Hall slash Bexley Square Parking Lot, and such plan be approved before construction begins. Two, um, recommend that the landscape plan be found satisfactory and consistent with the standards applicable to the main street district if, if modified. Um, as follows, A, change the material around the tree wells on Main Street from granite to limestone. You can ignore that, the next line, um, that. B, and again, this, I would point this, that one out as one we may particularly want to reconsider um, in light of the discussion we've just had, in order to partially offset the increase in non-porous surfaces under the plan, applicant will present a plan for landscaping and hardscape replacement and maintenance for the alley connecting the property to Brighton Road, which includes replacement of asphalt with pavers or other material allowing for permeable drainage. If the applicant is advised by the fire department, which is what we had heard about previously, that permeable materials may not be used in this alley, we communicate, it will communicate such direction of the Tree and Public Garden Commission and seek further direction concerning this plan. C, with respect to the access road on the side, west side of the building, a brick threshold will be conclude, included adjacent to the sidewalk crossing to differentiate the surface and maintain consistency within the main street district. Uh, B, if plantings on either side of the access road on the west side of the building fail at any time, or if the city arborist determines that they are failing to grow at rates that would be, she would, would achieve the expected landscaping results, the applicant will present a plan to the Tree and Public Garden Commission after consultation with the adjacent residents. Uh, D, with respect to the fence at the rear north end of the property pursuant to Bexley Ordinance twelve sixty four oh five, the fence will be relocated from a location shown on the plans to the property line and screening relocated to the south parking lot side of the fence. The parking, the applicant shall present a plan of the Tree and Public Garden Commission for variation in the species included in the screening. Um, you can ignore E. F, um, applicant will consult with the Tree and Public Garden Commission prior to planning uh, regarding the appropriate ground cover species to plant in the tree boxes contained in the plan. G, bike racks will be located from the main street side of the building to other locations on the property. H, uh, in light of the loss of canopy and mature trees within the site, applicant will make a contribution of six hundred, I'm sorry, six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, re- representing seven hundred and fifty dollars times nine current trees lost and not being replaced in the plan. Um, and this says for the, to the tree for Bexley Fund of the Bexley Community Foundation, that is not, there could be other places the donation could be made, including the city. It'd be solely for the planting of new trees in the city of Bexley is approved by the Tree and Public Garden Commission. H, all plantings shall be maintained in perpetuity absent approval by the Tree and Public Garden Commission. Three, recommend that the landscape plan not be found to represent exceptional design insofar as the landscaping design is considered a factor in determining under Bexley Ordinance twelve fifty four point fourteen, whether a special permit should be granted to allow the buildings to be built at a height greater than three stories based on the following findings. This recommendation is not a critique of the landscape architecture within the limitations of the footprint of the proposed project. B, the loss of London Plains on the property, which the Tree and Public Garden Commission cannot prevent under the current main street guidelines, represent a significant loss in the landscape of Bexley and the streetscape of Main Street. E, the size, density, and footprint of the project significantly limit any opportunity for landscaping that would qualify as exceptional design. Such plantings are limited to the periphery of the property and will require a number of years to gain sufficient height and canopy to match the magnitude of this structures being built. Four, recommends that a ve- if a variance is granted to allow the project to exceed the heights permitted under Bexley Ordinance twelve fifty four point fourteen, under a special permit, that BZAP as a condition of the variance modify the setbacks contained in the main street guidelines either to preserve existing street trees or to allow the replacement of those trees removed by plantings on both sides of the pedestrian walkway. Five, recommend that BZAP require the applicant to gain approval of any modifications to the plan presented by the tree, by the Tree and Public uh, Garden Commission prior to any plantings occurring. And six, recommend that BZAP in consultation with the Tree and Public Garden Commission present to council proposals to modify the permissible setbacks in the main street district so as to permit the preservation of significant street trees in future construction within the main street district.
Hey, thank you very much for putting that in good, good working order. So as Jim suggested, maybe we can co-op and lead the discussion on this or the fine tuning.
So let me just kind of go through this. Remember, we're, we're in the unusual space of making recommendations and not having the final decision-making here, and so this incorporates some of this. The first recommendation is just what we did last time with respect to the access road because we assume that this, that the city of Bexley or the owners of this property are going to present the plan, but we don't know that, and so just to make sure we're, we've safeguarded ourselves. One requires that that come before us and gets approved. Under two, um, you know, overall, I think, you know, that the plan does satisfy sort of the standards that we have as a, as a city. Um, and if we weren't jumping ahead, if we weren't in that sort of um, section of our ordinances that requires of finding among, or includes one of it, the aspects of finding that the design and architecture is extraordinary, I think we wouldn't have, we wouldn't, we wouldn't hesitate to say with conditions that this is an acceptable plan, at least that's my view. The first part of this is, the applicant's already said is fine, and Eleanor recommended uh, shifting from granite to limestone, which is consistent with the practice we've adopted. B, I think, you know, uh, given what you've heard, we can drop that. We could say, you know, if the, uh, if the city of Columbus doesn't permit it, then we drop it. Um, you know, I um, you know, I have no reason to disbelieve the applicant here, but I, we haven't heard it from the uh, the city of Columbus that we can't do it, so one option there would be to modify this to say if the city of Columbus says no, then that requirement's dropped.
The, the other, the other note would also be, I think, talking about the soils, you know, in terms of.
That's right, as the mayor finds out, it, 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 you know.
It might not be viable. We really did, we took, I think, three soil samples and engineer soil samples, and it was just, it was solid clay. And so as much as we wanted to have permeable pavers, it wouldn't have done anything to alleviate the flooding and the alley because it's just the water wouldn't go anywhere. It would just actually stay in the water.
And that, that may be enough, maybe that we just want to drop this one. Um, but it's there for discussion. You know, C, you know, we've heard from experts that the, these trees are fine, but it's of deep concern to the neighbors, so I put it in there because it doesn't seem to me that if, if everyone's right, then we, there's no problem in five years. But if for some reason we're wrong, the shade is different, if the trees don't have, you know, don't do as well as they do at a Chinese restaurant, um, you know, that, then the neighbors can have some voice in trying to find a replacement that works for everyone. We've sort of talked a lot about the fence, that's, that's why that's in there, and frankly, I have no concern with just putting, you know, rephrasing this, so we put the fence to the side. Uh, I don't think it's a big issue for the applicant there. I think it's a bigger issue um, for the neighbors and having some conversation there might make some sense. Um, you know, um, ground cover, I think we know where we are in ground cover. We're sort of up in the air on ground cover and reconsidering whether our current preferred ground cover is the right ground cover in the city. Bike racks, um, you know, can question whether that's part of a landscaping plan, but you know, landscape plan is nowhere to find in the ordinances, I can tell you that. Um, um, loss of canopy here, I'd sort of point this out, whether the tree fund is right or the money should go to the city, I mean, I guess there, it may be a little um, odd for it to go to a private foundation, even though private foundations, money comes right back to the city. My underlying concern in that provision is that we not just use it to plant trees we're going to plant anyway. We should use it to plant trees that we wouldn't plant otherwise. That's all I care about in that provision. Um, you know, um, the plantings in perpetuity, the applicant, you know, I, I don't doubt that the applicant is con- very committed while they own the building, making sure the plantings stay the same, but we've experienced with other commercial buildings that code enforcement isn't so, been so far a successful remedy to get things up to what we were promised, so that's why that's in there. Um, you know, I want to emphasize with three, I don't mean any disrespect for the landscape architecture here. I just think that that, that given the commercial reality that the, this developer wants a very massive building, that it's really hard to say that the landscape design here is extraordinary when you compare it to the loss of some significant London Plains along the street. And I don't know, you know, this is just one factor that BZAP will consider among others to decide whether a special permit is granted. That's, you know, again, all we can do is make recommendations, but at least from my point of view, and others may disagree, I, I wouldn't call the, the design, I mean, I would call it extraordinary within the constraints of the size of the building, but I wouldn't call it extraordinary in the abstract, so that's what, the reason for that. As I understand our, our code, and again, BZAP will decide this, the sixth floor section here um, would, that would require a variance because a special permit can let you go up to five stories, but a six story requires a variance. And that seems to me to put stuff on the table. Now, to be honest, I don't really think there's any circumstances where we can save the London Plains. I mean, I think the real, real fact that all the construction access is going to be off Main Street. I think it's, it's just not possible, which doesn't mitigate the loss in my mind. But it does seem to me that if they're going higher, the possibility, it, the, BZAP should at least consider the possibility of moving it back and creating sort of trees on both sides, which in fairness was an idea Susan had, who has better aesthetic judgment than I ever will. Um, the um, so, and then the last one is, I, you know, I, I guess, I, I re- this particular property has real challenges because of the elevation change, but um, in light of the fact that, you know, um, other property, we know that Capital University is studying its long-term plan for its property. There are other places along Main Street that there are significant trees that if, if a new landowner is allowed to build, um, you know, right up to the property line, those trees which wouldn't necessarily be lost, um, would be lost, and I just think as I said earlier today, it's time to think about, now that Main Street district is not in the abstract, but uh, we have a project which makes it really real. Is that what we want as a city? And city council may say, yeah, that's what we want as a city. But I think raising the issue as a tree commission is appropriated this time.
So um, before we go through and decide what we want to include or change, I would like to know, Eleanor, if you have any comments on any of these? Or if you'd like to take a hall pass for a minute?
Um, I think that, I mean, I think I'd comment on two D in terms of discussing whether or not meeting with the homeowners should be something that is is recommended, uh, should be discussed. The, the bike racks, I'm not a hundred percent sure if the bike racks are in the purview of the tree commission. I think that we can certainly discuss. discuss it, but I don't know if that's something that, you know, we necessarily comment on. And so I don't know if, um, I don't know if that should actually, if that just obfuscates.
Obfuscate.
Obfuscates.
Don't you love that word?
It's a big word.
Oh, B.
And I like the word, but it's hard for me to pronounce it. Um, and then, um, the, the last remaining ones, I mean, the ones that are talking about, um, recommending to, um, BZAP about future development. I think, I don't know if that necessarily needs to be tied to this. It's just, it's just a general question. I think it is an excellent idea. I think it is something that needs to be brought up and discussed with BZAP. But I just don't know if it, if it makes sense to tie it to this project. If it's just, if it's, if it's commingling to broader issues. So some of the, the, the bigger issues, I mean, there might be a recommendation that we have that is specifically related to this application. And then we might have a second thing that just says, hey, out of the discussion and review of this, here are some things that we would like BZAP to recommend. I just don't know how much sense it makes to commingle those.
That's fair. Mr. Martin.
Nothing to add.
Okay, one out.
No, I think Ellen has covered it.
Okay, Loriann.
I'm allowed to have a conversation.
Well, you're, you're the lucky one. Yeah. Okay, thank you for being here then. Mayor.
I would reiterate a couple of things that, um, Eleanor mentioned. Uh, bike racks in the right of way typically are within the city's purview. Those don't typically fall under planning or sorry, BZAP either. And I would just say that we encourage bike racks on Main Street. And so, um, we are in the habit of adding them, not subtracting them. Um, and find that in general, we have a, we have a not enough bike racks on Main Street, generally speaking. So I think it's important to consider how that, how well they fit within the, you know, unloaded of passengers with vehicles and, and access to the, to the property. And so we're really conscientious about where we place them or have them placed, but traditionally they're encouraged on Main Street. Um, I'd also note, this is a very unique site. Those are majestic and gorgeous London plain trees, as has been mentioned. But there are only two sites that are like this on Main Street and the other ones across the street from it, the actual Trinity property. And so I think there's somewhere in here an exhibit that shows elevation.
I think that has a stronger elevation.
Uh, in terms of the main street frontage, and I'm just going to end up trying to find something that I can't find. Uh, but essentially, I think the London Plains is at five feet above the grade of the sidewalk roughly. And by the time you get to that northern drip line, you're probably closer to ten, I would imagine. The elevation slopes up so much that, um, you know, I've tried through this conversation and through previous um, the, the other development proposals, which were also looked at by capital to see, are there ways to preserve the London Plain tree and still have a commercial property that you can access? And is, you know, accessible by folks with disabilities. Um, and it's hard to imagine how you could accommodate such a stark increase in elevation and still have a commercial property. And so I just would caution the tree commission against penalizing a commercial development proposal on a commercially zoned lot for trying to be commercial. Um, I think that's why we have the Main Street Design Guidelines. I think that's, we understand that none of us want to see tree canopy loss. None of us want to see the Main Street Commercial District wither on the vine. And so I think we need to find a, a good, um, a way to accommodate both the successful economy in Bexley as well as a successful tree environment. And I do think this is a very unique site. I think that increase in elevation that goes from the sidewalk to the north uh, really limits what you can do to the north of the sidewalk under the current condition for commercial development besides just recreating a suburban apartment complex, which is what we already have there. You know, if we want a Main Street that thrives, the interfaces that can be accessed by pedestrians and customers, then I think we need to be cognizant of that. Um, and I also affirm that I appreciate the rigor with which you uh, hold up the standards of our streetscape. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, let's go through this, uh, and come to a good conclusion. So, um, we're going to start with number one. Pretty much just sets forward the reasons, the rationale for the uh, conditions. Number two recommends that the landscape plan be found satisfactory. Uh, Jim mentions to cross out the A, the second line in A, um, and B, we talked about, um, the fact that that's probably not apropos considering the city of Columbus's line. Um, we can keep that in, we can ask for soil samples, we can ask for confirmation um, from the applicant from the city of Columbus that they're, uh, not interested in moving the line and they're concerned about, or, or, no, skip the moving line, but concerned about any drainage into their system. What would, what would be the consensus?
I think just for the purpose of due diligence, it might be in our best interest to at least have the city of Columbus confirm.
Okay.
Nothing, you know, I'm not saying, you, you obviously sound like you're very knowledgeable on the topic, but I just, again, for the purpose of due diligence.
Does any, is there anybody that disagrees with that?
I believe we have enough factual information to make the decision that, um, we not have a discussion about it any further. I, I feel with the soil testing the city did with the engineer's opinion, it is a matter of fact not doable.
Okay, Celeste. Okay, Dave.
I agree with Mary.
Okay.
I also think that it could be aesthetically pleasing and not to change that pavement to pavers. So why not do something to be more pleasing than just asphalt or keep it what it is?
I think it's asphalt now, is it not?
Yes, it is. But, you know, this is part of the development, that part of the development is to change it, upgrade. We want an upgrade. So that's what I would say.
Okay, could it be concrete?
Uh-oh. Jim?
Okay.
Sorry.
I, I'd be inclined to keep it in because I know, I mean, I think all we would be asking the applicant to do, and I think we can just change fire department to the city of Columbus um, in the way it's written, but I think um, if the applicant just comes back to us with a letter from the city of Columbus saying you can't do this, then we've been told it's, if, if, if we don't get that, then we can study further whether the soil is permeable, just because I think, I think what the mayor was saying, that this test were done in other hours.
It was different. It was not this exact location to clarify. Correct.
Who knows? Part of my yard is permeable and part of it's not.
This could be.
So if it's clay and we want to change it, it's, it's not going to be permeable regardless. So when it makes sense maybe to reconsider the brick?
Oh, I think, I mean, I think if the city of Columbus doesn't object to it, I think we would still want to see whether the underlying surface is permeable.
So can you work on that while we go on?
Sure.
Okay, so then.
Chair, one more consideration of that. I love the look of brick. I love it. I love granite. I love all those surfaces. When we look at what works well for cyclists, it does not work well for cyclists or strollers. And so think about that a little bit too. If the intent is truly to be a walking biking path, it, we've agonized over to other areas, just something to think about.
Okay. Okay, so let's go on to C. Um, we talked about the brick threshold, which I, I think, uh, we can talk about. Does anybody have any comments on specifying the brick threshold on the west side of the building?
So this will, um, go across the drive, right? Is that the intent?
It's north, it's north of the sidewalk, of the pedestrian sidewalk. And if you go to Gramercy now, which I'm sure you've done, Ryan, there's a brick threshold between Gramercy and Snap Fitness.
Okay.
Okay, it's north of the sidewalk. And it's maybe twelve feet and then the asphalt starts and it's really a great, you know, uh, alert signal for drivers who are coming out to notice that there's something difference happening as you approach that sidewalk.
So given the length of that drive, I, I think it's important to have something to alert drivers to the fact that they're coming to a place where pedestrians are crossing and having witnessed, um, off many times, unfortunately, in the city where people are attempting their right turn on red and fail to acknowledge, um, possible pedestrians on the, you know, in this case would be what, east or west side? That would make sense to have that. And I don't know if there's going to be any kind of traffic signal there or traffic light, which I realize may not be part of our committee here. But it just seems like we need to be thinking of pedestrians in this particular area and and come up with a, a way to alert drivers to the fact that they're coming up to Main Street. Plus, like I said, the length of that drive is such that, you know, people could potentially have opportunities to go a little bit faster than what they would like up at Gramercy where it's such a short drive.
Short drive. Good point. Um, so is there any disagreement on that? Okay, then go on to C two, plantings on either side of the access road fail that the applicant presented plan to the Tree and Public Gardens Commission after consultation with adjacent residents. Um, so.
Do you mean a revised plan? I'm assuming if the plants aren't working a plan, a plan to ameliorate, a different landscape plan, I think we need to be a little more specific in terms of.
Would you write that in, Jim? I, I was just, I do not want to be in conflict with my wonderful vice chair, but I feel to, um, that it would be unusual for the landscape architect to consult with the adjacent residents rather than have the plan come to the tree commission with notice to uh, adjacent residents that they are of standing and would come and, and be part of that conversation. So I don't, I'd have to ask my vice chair if that would be appropriate.
So I was just making.
A comment. I, I was suggesting that.
Eleanor say.
Yeah, no, I was suggesting that, um, having the line after consultation with adjacent residents, I would leave off those five words and, and say that, um, with those of standing invited to the meeting to discuss the plans, but not have it as a condition of the motion.
Okay, so you take out that and then I, you take out the last five words.
Right.
And then to answer Eleanor's um, concern, I would add to achieve the expected landscaping result.
Okay. Okay. Okay, we'll go on to D. Um, respect to the fence at the rear, I, I'm, my senses, we had all, all agreed that the fence would stay on the property line as, you know, spect in the ordinance and that we would, um, like to see a planting plan of that five feet, three hundred width potential garden. Right, we talked about that. Okay. Um, and then we will take out this insert modifications regarding plants from the east side of the building. Okay, the F, and we talked about F, G, bike racks. So let's talk about, let's just talk about that. It's, let's say it's not the bike racks per se, it's what hap, what happens at the front of that building. So there'll be trash containers, there'll be bike racks, there may be signage. How, how could we all work together to have the appropriate accessories in a compact area? So they don't, I, it's my word, it's an old fashioned word, dits up the front of the, of the building. So there's not something every three feet, which I, I find it a little bit unusual. Sometimes we we take, um, different installations and every three feet, it's something rather than trying to mass it and then leave open space for pedestrians. So we can take that out, but that's the underlying intent. Okay. Is that all right with everybody? Okay. Okay, in light of the loss of canopy immature trees, um, I think two, two parts of this I've heard. One is that, um, asking for Continental to, uh, donate to the Trees for Bexley Fund may be a little bit outside of the realms, a realm of, uh, let's say, I'm going to say transparency because many of the tree commission members are on that fund. So I think it'd be better in the conversation with the mayor for Continental and the city of Bexley to figure out a fund where those, those dollars would go. You know, however, however, the, the mayor and, and you all do that, I guess.
To an appropriate fund.
To an appropriate fund. Okay, to an appropriate fund. I would also suggest that if there's an opportunity for canopy coverage in that, um, parking lot plan, that maybe we should hold off in specifying the number of trees, but to say it agreed upon further time that it be that unless you don't feel, Ryan, that there's going to be any chance for adding shade trees in that area.
I think he's added shade trees, but not taking credit for it, right?
In the Did I miss that?
And, and if you read the, uh, the tree replacement language that I offered, um, it really, we are trying to get credit if we can do canopy over asphalt. It is in the city and, and we were asking if we can get credit for those as part of the nine trees. So if we only get three trees over there, then we would pay for fee in lieu of, for the remaining six, let's say. That's.
How about if we add to this language that basically says they'll pay this much less, whatever we approve in this, in the.
Okay, is that good? Okay. All right, let's, okay, let's go to the back then. Um, uh, I think there was some conversation about all planning shall be maintained in perpetuity absent approval by the Tree and Public Gardens Commission. And to Jim's point, it was to um, set down in writing, uh, the conditions, knowing that as to, to Jim's point, that sometimes it's hard for code enforcement to keep up with that. And there's also, I suppose, the opportunity that the building would be sold and the new owners might not be as aware as we have, as we are of these discussions. So we'd have it in this motion. Is there any objection to keeping that? Jim? No? Okay. Then let's, let's move on to number three. Um, you have heard why Jim has included that, uh, as part of the motion bringing to, to the BZAP's um, table, the fact that there are these conditions that make it very hard to maintain canopy coverage and keep mature trees. And so it's kind of an alert. Here's an alert. These are the problems that we're seeing. How can we have a conversation about this? Is it, you know, is keeping these trees, you know, in the future going to, are we also going to run into this? Or do we want to modify the Main Street guidelines to have more flexibility?
That, that's really six.
Well, six, well, I'm sorry.
You know, there are, just to clarify, there's a number of factors that the, that BZAP has to consider as to whether to grant a special permit. One, one of the, I mean, one of them in candor is, is it at parking? That may be enough for BZAP. They may not care about whether the architecture is and design is extraordinary. But since we are charged to comment on the landscape, it's, that's.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, right. Sorry, I just, I jumped ahead. Okay. So Jim knows his, Jim knows his writing. Okay. So that's why that's in there. Three, A, B, and C. Then four talks about the, um, they exceed the heights. I'm going from a special permit to a variance, right? And then five, um, you know, kind of required the applicant to gain approval of any modifications to the plan. So we could start with three.
So, um, I'm not a landscape architect. I don't profess to be one. Um, and I think the fact that Jim said that your, you know, plan is, doesn't represent exceptional design. And I feel like we're missing an opportunity to perhaps have exceptional design by doing things maybe differently than what you typically do. Um, using plants that aren't commonly used, um, coming up with ways to um, educate our public about, you know, using other plants instead of those that are always used. And, um, I, for example, like, you know, I, I had mentioned that swamp oak previously and and after I did more research, I've found that, you know, the species that you're recommending is, is a cultivar. So instead of using cultivars, can we use straight species? Can we use more natives? Can we educate our citizens? And, and I think about, if you truly had an exceptional design in that apartment complex, um, you make residents kind of proud of, of the landscape and where they live. And it, it also encourages people to want to move there because it is such a cool place, if you will, because of the fact that you came up with more of a creative design instead of using, like I said, things that everybody sees, you know? So just having a little bit of uniqueness to the design, I think, would be a feather in your cap. And perhaps you could be, uh, a trendsetter, if you will. Um, I know it's a big thing these days. I, I read a lot about it online where cities are are focusing their efforts on coming up with newer ways of planting and, um, like I said, using plants that um, aren't commonly used. like I said, using plants that aren't commonly used and give us an opportunity to see things differently. So I just wanted to add that.
Okay, Sheila, do you have any comments on section three?
I do not.
Okay. Celeste. Okay. So if I underst, go ahead. Oh, I was, no, I'm, I, what I was.
You don't have any comments.
Well, okay then. Jim?
I mean, I wrote it.
Well, you may.
I still agree with it.
Yeah, but you know, we've had discussions, so that could have.
Yeah, no, I, I, you know, and again, I would just emphasize it's not a critique of the landscape architect. It's a, I don't know, I mean, it might be possible within the footprint of this to do something more as Mary suggests. But compared, you know, give, when I weigh what's lost against what's in here, I just don't think it reaches the category of exception.
Okay, so let's go on to number four. Recommends that if variances granted to allow the project to exceed the heights, permitted under Bexley ordinance 1254.14, under a special permit that BZAP as a condition of the variance modify the setbacks contained in the Main Street Guidelines, either to preserve existing, existing street trees or to allow the replacement of those trees removed on planting some both sides of pedestrian sidewalk. Any comments on that? No?
I have a comment.
Yes.
So the, you know, the more I think about it, I'm, I'm not sure that even with a variance in a setback, we could save the street trees. So I might be inclined to strike the first part of that where it says either, either to preserve existing street trees or, so I would just say to allow the replacement of those trees removed by planting on both sides of pedestrian walkway. That may not be what BZAP wants, but I do think that that would be a possibility that given the setback doesn't exist now, like we talked about last time, that it'd be impossible to plant trees on both sides.
Right, right. Okay, is, how does everybody feel about that?
I love that idea on both sides.
Okay.
Good job, Jim.
Okay, any, Dave? Celeste? Mary? Okay. Do you want to, can you make those changes while we go on? Okay, okay. Number five recommends that BZAP require the applicant to gain approval of any modifications to the plan presented by the Tree and Public Gardens Commission prior to any plantings occurring. Straightforward, no, neat conditions. Okay, then we come to number six that I jumped to before. Recommend that BZAP in consultation with the Tree and Public Gardens Commission present to council proposals to modify the permissible setbacks in the Main Street District so as to permit the preservation of significant street trees and future construction within the Main Street District. I think the question is, you know, number one, does it belong in this document? Two, does it belong as an addendum for future discussion, maybe among the commissions that BZAP, ARB and Tree Commission? Three, is there no place for it at all?
Probably two as a lesson learned, perhaps?
So as an addendum?
Yes.
As an addendum with. Okay, Sheila? Yeah, Celeste? Okay, Dave?
Fine as an addendum.
Fine as an addendum, okay. Would anybody rather not see it at all? No?
I think it's good to acknowledge because it could potentially come up again. And that way we've addressed it and documented it.
Okay. Jim?
And, you know, I just wanted to clarify in light of the mayor's remarks, I'm not so concerned about what happens in the current Trinity Seminary space. I mean, I think there's lots of challenges that anyone would face if one wanted to do a project there. And I agree about the elevation. But we don't know about the future of capital and what property it's going to sell. And so if you get on the other side of college with the current setbacks, you could lose trees that construction wouldn't require the loss of. You know, you, I think that, that, you know, if capital wanted to do sort of a joint commercial uni, university building project and could build up to the property line, we would, and we haven't addressed that, we'd be sorry.
Okay, okay. So Mayor, would you like?
Yeah, BZAP isn't routinely bringing things before council. And I, I would just, as a, sort of the way that the flow works, we're, as you know, we're set to revise our Main Street Design Guidelines. And so maybe the recommendation is that when the city is in the process of resigning, is in the process of revising the Main Street Design Guidelines, this be considered? In the absence of any revision happening soon.
Fine with that, but to show out, I believe BZAP's ordinance does say they can bring recommendations, presenting changes to council.
I'm just, from a practical perspective, it's just, it's not typically flowing that way. And I think that we know that there is council's about to adopt a strategic plan that calls for Main Street Design Guidelines to commence next year. And so I think we could maybe work into that.
Okay, how about recommend to BZAP and?
Council.
City Council. Okay, so what I'd like to do now is to just go back here and have Jim read his changes and if we can all stay alert, we can then take a motion for approval of this document.
So paragraph one is unchanged. Second paragraph is under A, we're removing the bracketed statement. Under B, here's what I've done. Applicant will advise whether the City of Columbus will permit a permeable surface in the alley. If it will, the commission will further study whether a permeable surface is practical and advisable.
That sound okay to everybody? Practical and advisable?
The commission will study or, okay, so i- in that case, then you were saying that then the commission would then potentially ask the applicant or?
Ask the applicant to do that.
Okay.
With the recognition that they can always take that backup, because that's the zone we're in.
Okay.
So then under C2, we're striking the last five words after consultation with adjacent residents and replacing that with to achieve the expected landscaping results. E is no, never been a part of this.
Correct.
That was a placeholder. G, we're taking out.
Correct.
H, we're striking in the third line the Trees for Bexley Fund of the Bexley Communicate, Community Foundation and replacing that with an appropriate fund. That's one change we're making there. And then my language is a little imprecise here, but at the end of that, we're adding such payment shall be offset by any planting canopy replacing planties approved by the commission in the city called Parking Lot Plan.
Is that all right with everybody? Okay.
No changes in three or after Main Street Guidelines for taking out either to preserve existing street trees or no changes in five. And then six, we're making an addendum rather than part of this.
Correct.
And recommending can I just suggest that we take six out and put it under old business at our next meeting? Since we're not, it's not inherently part of this, and that'll give us time to craft the language more carefully rather than doing it on the fly.
It's an excellent suggestion. Okay, so that motion, both verbal and there, and written narrative is before you. So is there a second to it?
Second.
Do we have discussion? Is there no discussion? All right. I call for the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those will pull the same sign? Any abstentions? A motion carries. So that concludes our business for today. We'll be meeting on Monday, December 18th from four to six for our regular monthly meeting. And landscape applications that are pending will come forward at that time as well as some of this business from today. So have a good night.